So, welcome everybody to the September 28th, 2020 Board of Supervisors Meeting in North Coventry Township. Joining us on this Zoom call tonight is myself, Jim Marks, as Chairman of the Board, Rick Shiller Supervisor, Rebecca Elliott Supervisor, Vice Chairman Spencer Claypool. Absent is Harvey Greenwell. Also joining us is our Township Manager Erica Badorf. And our Township Solicitor is off tonight due to the holiday. So he will not be joining us. So at this time, I, to the Board, you have the minutes of the September 14th, 2020 meeting. Do I have any comments or corrections on those meeting minutes?
No.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 14th, 2020?
So moved.
Spencer made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Rick first. Rick made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and the motion passes and minutes are approved of September 14th. Bills, we have unpaid bills totaling $64,137. And since the last meeting, have a list of paid bills and payroll totaling $106,224. Any comments or questions on the bills? Questions from the public, these payables were posted to the Township website on Friday for anyone to view. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to pay the $64,137 and acknowledge the $106,224 of payroll and pay items since the last meeting?
So moved.
Rebecca made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the bills are paid. Developers' bills, anybody have anything on the developers' bills? Under subdivision and land development, we have the Bentley subdivision. They've sent a request for an extension. There was an email that was in your packet. Do I have any comments or questions on the extension request from the Board? I do have a question, Erica, in regards to the outstanding fees.
Yes.
How does that play into approving an extension with a balance?
Right, well, and good question because we've been working with Mr. Bentley on that issue. For the MPC, we are required to work with, within those guidelines, within the timeframe, to provide these additional extensions for the project. What, in the MPC, what we can do, right now, what we have done, the policy is to stop the consultant review of anything that is submitted. So that's really where our leverage is, and also the resolution of approval cannot move forward without any outstanding fees paid. But it's in a bit of a predicament right now, in order to move forward, these outstanding fees have to be paid, or we're not going to authorize any additional work. So the ball is in the court as far as moving forward, but that additional time is something that the township needs to provide in order to comply with the MPC.
Anybody else have questions? Any questions from the public? Okay, at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to grant the time extension request of the Bentley subdivision through December 31st, 2020.
I'll move to that.
Spencer made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rick made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Extension request is approved. Okay, moving on into new business. Coventry Trail Proposal for Engineering and Design. There is a proposal in your packet from McMahon Associates. This is for work to be done for the proposed trail that will come be part of the Scoopall River, Scoopall Valley Trail along 724, and which will then cross over into Kennelworth Park. Erica, do you want to kind of expand on this? I know there's different phases of this, and maybe talk a little bit about where the money is coming from and the timeframe.
Sure. The Coventry Trail project, as Jim had explained here, is an extension of what the Scoopall River Trail is doing and the enormous amount of work that is involved with the construction. The crossing at 724, the extension to the new parcel that is owned by the township that we purchased with open space funds connects to the Kennelworth Park. So this is contemplated to be an actual trailhead in addition to that crossing, which will bring the users of the Scoopall River Trail off of the trail, create a connection at this parcel at Kennelworth. I know there's been conceptual design work done and completed through the, through Michael Lane and the Regional Parks and Recreation Coordinator. And that conceptual work is really the basis that put together a grant proposal through Health and Wellness Foundation. They're the ones that provided a grant to the township with, also with a township match in a total amount of $37,500. We had received three proposals for the engineering and design that is required for these, the phases of the project, which we had to break out into three. The first phase being the crossing at 724, along 724 to this new parcel, the actual Kennelworth Park connection to the park and almost the disc golf area, and then a connection there to Miller Road and development on Miller Road, where there's a trail easement. So because of funding constraints, we're looking at Phase 1 and Phase 2, 724 to Kennelworth Park. And this work involves the wetlands delineation, topography, and does surveying and the GIS mapping to put more specific construction estimates together, get all that survey work done, look at exactly what the constraints are for ownership right of way, all of those things. We did seek proposals through McMahon Associates being our transportation engineer, but also through Gilmore Associates and through traffic planning and design. So the full-scale project and looking at the three phases is $150,000, $200,000. It's an extensive project. But this planning is really where the Scoopall River Trail was before they got to the point where they could do construction. So it's a key connection, but this is the kind of work that can be done proposed through McMahon, which we thought did the most thorough job and was the best value in terms of these work items here. It can take us to the point where we can look at additional funding through PAD, CNR, the multimodal fund available through PENDOT, DCED, and that's the money where there's additional soft costs that can be provided and the construction cost. But we have some work to do to get us to that point. And this is the work that would be funded through the Health and Wellness Foundation grant and a local match, which was already committed. So the total is $37,500. Is anybody, I'm sorry, can I answer any questions?
Yes, you made the comment about $150,000, $200,000. What was that reference to?
The preliminary and final design activities, because that would take us to the point where we're looking at NPDS permitting, the final construction drawings, bidding, the whole. We looked at the whole scope of the project when we had the conceptual plans done with the previous, I think it was Navarro, for the previous work that was done to just get the concept on a plan.
Thank you.
Sure, sure.
Any other questions from the Board? Any questions from the public? Public is muted at this point. If you do have a question, please unmute yourself and identify yourself in comment. I'm not hearing any. So at this point, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consulting agreement presented by McMahon and Associates in a total amount of $37,500.
So moved.
Rick made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think I heard Spencer there first. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. All right, so moving on to the PICO Green Region Grant for 2021. This grant round could provide the township an additional $10,000 of funds to complete additional engineering required for this project. Erica, you want to give us a little expansion on this?
Sure, the PICO Green Region Grant comes around annually. We had, I know it's a competitive grant process, but the, this project with Scoopall River, the Scoopall River Trail could be a nice connection. And we had put forward with Michael Lane and Chairman of Parks and Rec, J. Urb, we're looking at the possibility of applying for $10,000 additional dollars. There are line items that were provided, I'm sorry, line items that were provided in the scope of work through McMahon, and we could do a bit more engineering as a result of that $10,000. There is a match requirement. We can use the existing match that we have committed for the Health and Wellness Foundation money and use that on this PICO Green Region Grant match as well.
Okay, any comments from the Board? Any comments from the public? All right, so at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the submission of a 2021 PICO Green Region Grant for the Coventry Trail project. Do I have that motion?
I'll make.
Spencer makes a motion. Rebecca, you seconding?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. Okay, moving on to the MMO, Minimum Municipal Obligation. As you remember, each year around this time, the manager is required under PMRS guidelines to inform the Board of the Minimum Municipal Obligation for both the uniform and non-uniform pension plans for 2021. In your packet was that report. The estimated 2021 non-uniform MMO is $49,423, and the uniform MMO is $133,888. There is no action that is required on this, but does anybody have any comments or questions? So the manager has met her obligation to provide that information to us, and we thank you for that. Moving on to old business up, no, I'm sorry. We need a resolution authorizing the condemnation of two tax parcels owned by Greg and Beth Miller, which is located up on Chestnut Hill Road. These are two parcels that the Open Space Review Board has negotiated an agreement to purchase as part of that purchase and to benefit the property owners. Township does what's called a friendly condemnation. It's to the benefit of the property owners, reduce some of the costs that would fall on them. Without this, there is a resolution in the packet. Does anybody have any comments or questions on that resolution?
No.
Chris Washburn, do you have any comments?
No, this is, as you said, it's based on the existing agreement with the owner to proceed, so both parties have agreed to it.
Yes, and I know the word condemnation, it's a mutual or friendly condemnation that is a benefit to the property owner. So it's something that we have done under the guidance of Larry Sager for the entire time of our open space program. Okay, any other comments from the public?
I have a quick question, if it's okay.
Yeah, I have it.
Hi, how much are, is the township paying for the parcels and how large are they?
Chris, you want to jump in here?
The parcels are a little over six acres. Two parcels, and what it is doing, right now, they're vacant parcels, but it will provide good flexibility for a trail connecting different parts of Coventry Woods Park without the public having to wander down the public road that is very steep and not very friendly for pedestrians. So it works out really for both parties.
And you said that was Chestnut Hill Road?
Yes.
Okay, so the road's not friendly, but the condemnation is, got it.
That's correct.
That's my joke for the night.
All right, I'm watching your tweets, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Evan. Any other comments or questions from the public? So we need a motion to authorize the signing of the resolution. Does somebody want to make that motion?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Rick made the motion. Spencer seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Chris, you didn't mention the price for the open space parcels.
Well, it's it's roughly $150,000, but most of it is planned for funding from DCNR and Chester County. Chester County has already awarded the grant, and DCNR is pending.
Okay, and so that'll cover the entire cost?
It will cover most of the cost.
Okay, what's the township's contribution?
It could be, it could be zero, but we have to wait to see what the grants are awarded.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
That's fine, Evan, thanks. All right, old business, Fernbrook Lodge siding color. Erica, I'm gonna let you step in. You can report on the meeting that you had the other day. Bring us up to date. I do have something that I can share on screen that might be helpful, so take it away.
Okay, very good. So we had a pre-construction meeting with our contractor Barclay Construction. We reviewed the samples for the Hardy Plank siding. We had available with us last Thursday siding in colors, some neutrals, ranging from some grays to some browns, tans. We had put forward this past Friday, we had options, one being the darkest, iron gray. I know you can't see this very well right here. We had timber bark, which is something in the middle, my lighting's not great, and then khaki brown. I understand, I think we've acknowledged that the importance of this project getting underway and, you know, preserving the state of the lodge, trying to, you know, really honor its original features. I understand, you know, the siding as it is today is red. So today, I was in touch with the contractor, and I had been about the colors provided because they were what the manufacturer had in both the trim and the siding. He had contacted an alternative supplier who can provide this country lane red, as Chairman Marks says here. And that, that color is available on a special order. It would be six weeks, and there would be an additional cost of $5,000, as it is not part of their standard colors provided. So this would be part of a special order. So that is provided here. We do have the windows in evergreen that was part of the bid specification. That's a Marvin model. That, they are available, and they were going to be on a six-week delivery schedule. And so I provided this option, as well as the previous options for colors for the Fernbrook Lodge restoration.
We need to select a color.
We do, we do. I did, oh, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. I just want to mention, I know we're under some time constraints, but I wanted to make sure, put a request out to have the Open Space Committee, as well as Parks and Recreation Commission weigh in a bit, you know, just regarding the colors, if they have any thoughts. And Parks and Recreation expressed, you know, the desire, the majority, that the red, keeping with the red was the option or preference, rather. But if there was no red, it would be the, let's see here, timber bark. And then Open Space, a few members had responded with that same recommendation. But that's, that was with information they did not have, which I got a few hours ago from our contractor.
Okay, what's the comments from the Board?
Sorry.
I liked the khaki brown myself. I think it matched the stones nicely. But all of the colors blend nicely, I think, you know, and on earth tones. So whatever the majority comes up with, I'm okay with.
One concern I would have is it being a special color and has to be a special order. If there was to be some replacement down the road of siding or a change of some sort, what kind of problem we have getting more of that color? Would we have to have a minimum amount and be paying a real premium for it? Where this other material is in stock and available? That's just my one concern would really be, and plus the additional $5,000 is also a concern. With that said, I'm open to any color personally. I would go with the bark.
Which was the middle color?
Right, the one that Open Space suggested.
Yeah, my worry on that is that there's not enough contrast between the roof, the windows, and the siding. I just, and I didn't stand out there and see it. I saw it in Erica's office one day, but, and it's hard with a little piece to see it. So that's my fear, is that there's not enough contrast there. Like you see it now, you have a green roof, and you got red siding, and it's a pretty distinct difference. I just worry that, you know, there's just not enough to set it off, and it'll be one monolithic color that doesn't really, the colors don't complement each other and kind of maybe work against each other. But, you know, it's really hard, and the sun will change the color, and the time of day will change the color, and.
I want to add that I'm in favor of the red. Even though it's costs a little more, we do have the funds that we can use to cover the costs.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely do have the funds. I mean, I, I think it's more historically consistent. Again, we don't have those in our hands to see it, so we don't know, you know, the shade of it. But, I mean, I would lean towards the red also. This way, I wouldn't have that fear that once we get that color in. Hey, Rick, I'm reminded of the Public Works Building and the way we were able to get them to build like a little four-by-six sheet of plywood that had the colors on it. Do we have time to do something similar to that?
Well, again, going back to this being a special order, I'm not, without contacting the contractor and finding out if there's any material available. I mean, that certainly would be an ideal situation to have a sample panel where we can actually have a four-by-four, 16 square feet up against the existing. That is not part of the contract. If they can do it, they might charge us an extra for it. But I think it might put some feelings aside of, you know, whether it's good or bad. It's certainly worth a question, you know, if they can, you know, round some of this up just to put a sample together.
I mean, I'd feel better if we had something to look at. I mean, you know, this is something that's gonna outlive us all.
It'll be there for the lifetime.
Right. So I don't, I just don't want to guess from a Zoom call swatch for something that's gonna be there perpetually. It's just gonna be there, this hardy back stuff lasts forever. So Erica, if you can kind of reach out, maybe get us bigger swatches or color. Even, I mean, we don't need an actual swatch of this, of the red, but of something of that color. We don't need the material, but something of that color would be, might be helpful. I'd hate to rush into a decision that's gonna last a lifetime and get it wrong.
Patty. Yeah, I just want to say, in Parks and Rec, certainly, we're looking at it as a restoration project as much as possible. And I understand that it's an additional, it would be an additional $5,000. But when you consider the amount of money that is being spent on this project as a whole, that seems somewhat insignificant for, as you said, something that would last a lifetime. I'd also like to suggest, not only if you could get something in the, in the red, but also something in the timber bark color for a bigger, you know.
Yes.
To look at that also.
Yes, yeah, I'd like to see, I'd like to see all the colors, or maybe just the two, if it seems like we're down to those two. Although my initial reaction was the lightest of all of them, because in Erica's office, it looked, the other ones looked darker. So just to have even three bigger samples that we can kind of compare in the, against the roof, against the outside, actually on site, would be helpful. And I agree with you, the money is less significant. We do have this money in the Open Space account, so it, you know, 5,000 is pretty, you know. Consider the time period here, I think it's worth spending a little extra. Erica, can you see about trying to get something that we can look at?
Well, sure.
All right. I know we're up, we're up against time constraints here, but this is pretty significant. This is a big, huge building and a big focal point for our township, so I don't want to, I don't want to do it wrong. There is no motion, there's nothing. This is just part of our discussion, so there's nothing further here. No official action needs to be taken on this. We'll get Erica to follow up, see if we can make a more informed decision on picking the color for this lodge. It's good to see that this thing's moved forward and, you know, I look forward to the outcome. Okay, administrations, supervisors, reports. Rebecca, do you have anything?
Yeah, there are a number of things that were brought to my attention this time. First, I want to acknowledge Patty and John Worth for their bat house over at the Public Works Building. I think that's a clever idea, and it's kind of unique to our township. And I just want to give you recognition and thank you very much for that bat house. Next, dogs. I received some reports that there was a dog attack at Fernbrook. And I know that a police report was made. I just want to encourage residents that the dogs need to be on a leash and controlled. This poor victim dog has had hundreds of dollars of surgery and has had a real terrible problem, and they are not able to find the persons whose dog did that. So just be careful in the parks with the dogs. Another dog event was that a rather large dog, a mastiff, got his, in the past, got his paw caught in the drain grate. And apparently, if you have a big dog, they could get stuck. Their suggestion was made for chicken wire to cover some of the drain grates so that they didn't get stuck in there. But I'm not sure how that's gonna play out, I'm just reporting. And the last thing is that a number of political signs. And the last thing is that a number of political signs have been stolen out of people's yards. So these are some of the things that were brought to my attention this period. Thank you.
Rick, do you have anything?
No, nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, I guess two things, there are two things. John McKee, Leaf Pickup, where are we with that?
I sent the schedule to Denise today, we'll begin the end of last week in August.
In August, you're going back in time?
I'm sorry, October, same as last year.
Okay. All right, very good. And Erica, 1778 St. Peters, any updates?
Yes, sure. I'm not sure if Runcom Toy is on this evening, but we, we have filed a citation regarding the vehicles that are located on the property. I had been in, been in touch several times with Chuck Garner, attorney for Mr. Rock. And, you know, so at this point, we've done what we can. He's certainly aware that that was going to be taking place and will be waiting to see how that all transpires. So I will keep you informed on that end.
Now, there's a period of time, they have periods of time to correct, is it 30 days?
We, we feel the, you know, local, what we think is it'll be probably 15 days and we'll see.
James, Ron.
There we go.
Hey, Ron.
The citation goes to the District Justice. They issue the notices from the District Justice Office. What they do is send out the citation. The defendant has the opportunity to plead guilty or innocent. If they plead innocent, then they get a court date. If they plead guilty, then they have to either pay a fine and/or clean up or do some restoration.
I see Sharon's on here. Sharon, any comments?
No, no comments, just thankful that you're still pushing forward.
Yeah, we'll keep, you know, the wheels turn slow, but we'll keep going.
Thank you.
Managers' report.
Okay, thank you. I have no updates regarding COVID for the time being. I did want to thank John Worth for his leadership for the EAC. There was a very successful webinar series and the last seminar was 61 participants that we had on HAWK Identification. Vince Smith, the president of the Valley Forge Autobahn Society, gave the presentation. So we have all of those webinars recorded, available on the township website and YouTube. Voting is coming up quickly here for the general election. And Chester County Voter Services has a number of updates regarding support for the election, including secure drop-off locations, excuse me, for mail-in and absentee ballots as well as two satellite election office locations. Their website, I would refer everyone to their website and also their phone number in order to get information regarding all the processes that are involved here, given COVID and, you know, some first-time efforts on their behalf and, you know, for everyone regarding, regarding this process. I had reported on Fernbrook Lodge, we had our pre-construction meeting, I'll follow up on the renderings and those colors. The MS4 Annual Report, LTL Consulting assisted us with our submission of our annual report. Covers activities of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. And we have our minimum control measures, another number of projects, I'll be following up with LTL regarding inspection that we need to do for outfall locations, excuse me, required moving forward on that end. And a financial update, we have analyzed the general fund budget performance reports through January 1, 2020 through August 31, 2020. Total revenue collected, including taxes, fees and intergovernmental revenue year-to-date is $3,943,868. Represents 82% of our total income budget for the year. And on the expense side, actual budget figures with total expenses of $3,331,430 represent 64.3% of budget spending for this eight-month period. I have mentioned before, we're, you know, watching things very closely and the budget is in stable condition for the present time. And we are certainly working on the 2021 Budget and Development Meeting with department heads, looking at different reports and gearing up for our budget workshop, which we'll be doing here soon in October. And we also received our 2020 Fire Relief Association allocation, and that is an amount of $52,089. And that was on our bills list this evening. It only went up about $40 since last year, but that is always, there's a number of factors involved with that allocation. But they'll go directly to the Norco Fire Company. And just, oh, go ahead.
That goes into fireman's relief, right? That doesn't go to the general fund. So there's, that money is proprietary, so it's specific. There's only specific things that it can be used for and not used for the general expenses of the fire company.
Yes, that's exactly right. Thank you.
John, John Worth, the, I'm gonna echo what Erica just said. The, that summer series was phenomenal. The turnout was far exceeded the expectations I had for it. And this last one that had over 60 people, you had an expert come in and give the presentation and professional person, professional speaker and presenter was just really, really well done. And you really should be commended for, for the work that the EAC and you as the leader of that have, have been doing. Because that, that was a fantastic idea. You know, one could say risky, but the turnout was, was fantastic. And look forward to, to what you have either over the winter time or certainly next summer in an encore presentation. So John, good job on that.
Oh, Jim, thank you very much, I appreciate it. And I certainly appreciate the, you know, comments from, from everyone about that. And we are, we are planning to do a winter series. We want to do a series of at least four more because we have had a good turnout. And in fact, Patty and I met some folks over the weekend who, who had listened in on a couple of them and encouraged us to keep it going. So I think we will do that.
All right, so for solicitors' report, but our solicitor is off tonight. He did provide a letter, which essentially, I think we covered most of the things that were in his, in his letter for the follow-up. So we'll move on to public comments. Anybody from the public who has a comment, this is your time to unmute yourself, identify yourself and make your comment. Takeers. Okay, any of our township staff, John, Matt, any, anything you want to, Ron, anybody have anything they want to offer?
We just, I just wanted to mention that we've got a lot of positive feedback from the car show that we had the other weekend. It was a good turnout here for the, for the, for that day and had a lot of, a lot of support. So we were very thankful for that one. And I'm not sure if the exact figures came about yet, but it was a good, a good amount that'd be heading down to the fire company.
That's great. Thanks, Matt.
Sure.
And I don't want to leave out Kelly and Denise, who are both on this call, too, part of our township staff. So glad everybody, everybody could attend and be here tonight. Okay, this time we are going to recess. We are having an executive session tonight briefly. There'll be no motions or decisions made from that. It's just a brief discussion on personnel issues. Our next meeting is Tuesday night. The odd time of the year where we have a Tuesday night meeting due to the Columbus State Holiday, which is Monday. So that next meeting is Tuesday, October 12, October 13 at 7:00 PM. So hope that you can join us then. My team participants here tonight, thank you all for, for attending and being part of this. Okay, the board just come out of executive session, no motions or decisions or official actions were taken during that session. So at this time, we will agenda the meeting. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.